Thank you. So wonderful. Thank you for taking time to join us for this important forum with the candidates to represent San Jose City Council District 5. Hello, my name is Regina Celestin Williams and I'm the Executive Director of SV at Home and the SV at Home Action Fund. We are proud to be hosting this forum tonight. We would like to remind everyone that SV at Home works for a future where all Santa Clara County residents have a safe, stable, and affordable home, and that San Jose City Council's constituents include all San Jose's residents, both housed and unhoused. So I ask everyone to be respectful of that. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment and recognize our co-hosts. Our forum tonight is co-hosted by lots of amazing partners. The Black Leadership Kitchen Cabinet, the Billy D. Frank LGBTQ Community Center, California YIMBY, Destination Home, Green Belt Alliance, Housing Choices Coalition, the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley, LEAD Filipino, Momentum for Health, the San Jose Silicon Valley NAACP, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits, South Bay YIMBY, Somos May Fair, Student Homeless Alliance, Streets for People, United Way Bay Area, Urban Environmentalists, the Vietnamese American Roundtable, and YIMBY Action. So now it is my pleasure to introduce our moderator for tonight's forum, Jenna Cada, reporter for the San Jose Spotlight. Hi Jenna.
Hi everyone. Thank you. Tonight, we are honored to be joined by four candidates for San Jose City Council District 5. Our candidates tonight are Nora Campos, H A Nguyen, Peter Ortiz, and Andres Quintero. A fifth candidate, Rolando Benia, had accepted an invitation to participate in early March. However, yesterday his campaign notified the organizers of tonight's forum that he would not be participating. Before we get started, let's review the rules and expectations of this forum. We'll hear an opening statement from each candidate, then we'll move into a Q and A discussion with some long-answer questions, and then some rapid-fire questions. Finally, we'll hear a closing statement from each candidate. The candidates have seen the questions ahead of time. For each question, time will be limited and the time limits will be strictly enforced. Candidates have been asked to not critique, respond to, or engage with their fellow candidates during the forum. There will not be an opportunity for rebuttals. Candidates have been asked to keep comments focused on the issues, the job, the city, and themselves, their experiences, approach, and ideas. All candidates will have an opportunity to answer each question. So let's get started with one-minute opening statements, and we'll start with Mr. Quintero.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about a very, very important topic. This happens to be a topic that forms part of my platform upon which I'm running and I'm ensuring that it's going to be a priority for our campaign. Why? Because housing affects us all. On a personal level, we've seen too many of our family members, friends, many of my students who have told me that they are now having to embark on the journey of going out to Los Banios, Tumercet. Just recently, this Sunday, a young couple that attempted to make their life here, the place where they've lived their entire life, was telling me that they're moving out to Atwater, two hours away because they can no longer afford to live here. And it's unacceptable, it's wrong, and each of us who are running would be inexcusable for us to disregard the need for more housing to address the issues that are impacting our community. It's for that reason that I'm here. I want to thank you all for this opportunity. Look forward to a very lively discussion on this topic.
Thank you. Ms. Campos?
Thank you, and it's great to see you again. I am running for San Jose City Council, and I think housing is one of the number-one issues that we'll all be facing, not during the campaign, but also once we, someone gets in office. It has been a priority for the city of San Jose. For those of you that don't know, I served on the city council in 2001 and 2010, and back then, the mayor had set a goal of building 10,000 affordable housing units. And I took it upon myself to make sure that we were very aggressive and we moved forward to build within East San Jose. And we built close to 3,000 affordable housing units in District 5. And some of those were also affordable housing units that we were able to purchase. So this is an area that I'm excited about, the opportunity to work on, to come to the table and think outside of the box. When I was in the Assembly, one of the things that we noticed that was happening back then, there were 4,000 unhoused population, and that's what we needed to do.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen? Oh, you're muted.
Good evening, and delighted to be here today. You see, for the past 35 years living in San Jose, I have worked in different capacities, government, private, nonprofit sectors. Back in 1975, I was a homeless, entryless person myself. And this country of ours housed more than 1 million homeless people. Today, these people are taxpayers. Our city and county combined have only 10,000 homeless people. And we don't know what to do with them. We don't have a solution for them. This is why I'm running for District 5, bringing in new and practical solutions for District 5. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening. My name is Peter Ortiz. I'm president of the Santa Clara County Board of Education and the candidate for San Jose City Council District 5. I represent a population that is often left out of our discourse, which is our young working-class renters who are being priced out of the neighborhoods we grew up in and are unable to see a future in this city, the city we've called home. Our campaign is a movement that is rooted in the economic justice for the families of East San Jose, and it's calling for a people-first economic package that will focus on investing in the public safety of local residents, allocating resources to address our broken roads and blighted neighborhoods, approving the affordable housing and renter protections our families need, and the activation of our major business corridors so we can build a thriving economy. I want to work hand-in-hand with the residents of this district to build a better East San Jose that works for all of us.
Thank you. So let's move into our main Q and A section. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. And so for the first question, "District 5 and the East Side Were Hit Hard by COVID, Further Exacerbating Many Residents' Housing Affordability Challenges." Challenges include overcrowding and high levels of rent burden, with a majority of lower-income renters spending over 50% of income on housing. How can the city prioritize affordable housing as part of an economic recovery, especially now that other pandemic-related protections like the eviction moratorium and rental assistance have expired? Let's start with Ms. Campos.
Thank you for the question. I think we all agree that we need to build more affordable housing, and we need to remove the red tape that City Hall currently has for preventing us to build affordable housing. I think I would like to take some of the best practices from AB 2176, which is my tiny-home legislation, and take some of those practices where we can actually remove the red tape and start building the tiny homes, but also maybe take some of those practices for affordable housing. The other thing that I know I want to move forward on building is making sure that we build an infrastructure within the city of San Jose and the Housing Department that only focuses on affordable housing. It's overdue. We need to have that, which would mean that we would have people that actually just focus on the environmental review, have planners to make sure that affordable housing is, the development of affordable housing is at the top, and also prioritize this as a council.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
Yes. So you're good? Yeah, thank you. You see, first thing is that the city has to step in. I think this is a good investment and a sensible investment. It costs less to keep the people where they are than later on have to deal with homeless issues. Very complicated. I would like to see that our city use the public facilities that are vacant, that are used uneffectively right now. It's taxpayer money. Use it. Make sure that these homeless people have a place to live, have food, provide them with a mattress, a blanket, and, you know, a pillow, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and then train them to become a responsible citizen like we did. We used to live in a camp. Look, we now have many people with multiple properties. Many people are successful business owners. We can do it in District 5 too, and in the city of San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you. As District 5 recovers, it will be essential that we prioritize developing an equity-focused recovery plan that centers our efforts where it's needed the most while continuing to provide a safety net to renters, workers, small-business owners, and our vulnerable populations. I will advocate for the production and preservation of affordable housing to be placed front and center of this recovery plan to stimulate our economy. However, this question also points out the fact that tenants have been particularly impacted from this pandemic. Many have incurred rental debt and have had to deal with the threat of eviction. While pandemic-related protections have expired, putting forth policies to provide permanent protections for renters would be a top priority for my office. A key piece of economic recovery is stabilizing our communities. Policies such as a right to counsel and the expansion of the tenant-protection ordinance would do just that, paving the way for a pathway for a full economic recovery.
Thank you. And Mr. Quintero?
First things first, we need to fast-track the development of more housing in general because it's already a deficit with many, not too many, you can never have too many jobs, but there's a lot of jobs and not enough housing. The city has advocated its responsibility or its ability to leverage its position as the city itself, and we've resorted to end-up fees that have allowed people to make a profit on the development and continue to just disregard the need for more housing for the people that work here, the people that are the backbone of our valley. And so my intention is to ensure that we start moving away from those opportunities to kind of disregard the need for more affordable housing and ensure that those units are incorporated or that the fees are going to be useful and will allow the city to move forward and develop those affordable housing units for which those fees are supposed to be, are intended for. So my priority is to use the tools that we already have and fully enforce them to the maximum extent that we can.
Thank you. Thanks. Our second question is, "As a new city council member, you will be asked to vote on San Jose's Housing Element, a document required by state law which lays out a plan for addressing the city's housing needs over an eight-year period. Among other requirements, in its housing element, San Jose will have to plan for 35,000 new affordable homes and also show that the city has enacted policies and plans to make this feasible. What priorities would you like to see included in San Jose's housing element?" Let's start with Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you for the question. You know, I will make top priorities affordable housing. You see, I like to, I am a businessperson. I like to finish things before the deadlines. I think I want to shorten the term. Instead of eight years, I want to shorten it to four years with a grace period of six years to complete affordable housing. I think eight years is too long. People cannot live that long or wait that long, you know, to be able to house. So with, by all means, we have to start working and working faster and more effectively with the help of the state, the county. We work together. We can pull all of the resources and the people to shorten the time and make sure everyone has a place to live, like a decent person. We can do it. Do help the refugee, the political refugees, Vietnamese. We can do it in San Jose.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you. As District 5 council member, I will advocate for our city to prioritize policies in the housing element that mitigate the displacement of residents and create opportunities for families to thrive in our city. I'll support language that allows our community to take leadership on housing stability and affordability through the implementation of community land trusts and the Community Opportunity to Purchase Act. Due to the ongoing threat of eviction for our working families, I will also prioritize the expansion of strong renter protections to prevent the displacement of our working-class residents. And finally, given District 5 neighborhoods already vulnerable to displacement, I will advocate for a neighborhood preference program which ensures that as our city builds new affordable housing, there will be a portion of new units set aside for existing families in the surrounding neighborhood. This is key to making sure that our next generation, young renters like myself, have a shot at having a place to start their own family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
I think that as we move forward towards ensuring that we comply with the requirements that are completely logical, that we have to ensure that our neighbors regionally are also fulfilling their end of the bargain, because this is not just going to be solved by us alone. And so we have to be, use our position as the 10th-largest city in the nation to be vigilant that everybody's doing their part. And I think that we can do so while being diplomatic and ensuring that everybody does their part. I believe, I know that affordable housing is essential, and East San Jose and District 5 has to do its part. Fully comes into that. However, I also believe that affordable housing cannot solely be relegated to the most, but is relatively affordable area of the city, and we've already done our part. We have multiple generations living in our neighborhoods, some of the most densely populated areas. And so we have to ensure that the entire city does its part as we fully flesh out this plan and the units are being developed.
Thank you. And Ms. Campos?
Thank you. I would like to see San Jose include all council districts and identify sites for affordable housing. I know that they tried to attempt to do that, but not very successful. Have affordable housing on transit lines and near jobs. Edenville, North San Jose, Midtown, Downtown, and West San Jose are great examples of areas in San Jose that are near job centers and on transit corridors. I would like to see a dedicated sub-department, and I've mentioned that before, within the Planning Department that focuses exclusively on affordable housing. This department would have dedicated planners, public works, transportation, and environmental review staff. It is crucial that we, infrastructure so that we can move quickly to make sure that affordable housing is not being put on the back burner and it's at the forefront so that the, as they're building the units, they're moving quickly right behind. If we're going to meet that demand of 35,000 units, we definitely have to have a department. So I'm hoping that I can put forward a memo that would address that.
Thank you. For our next question, we're going to turn to one of tonight's co-hosts, Somos May Fair. Rebecca Lazo is a member of Vecinos Activos at Somos May Fair, and she will ask the question. Oh, you're muted.
Hi, my name is Rebecca. I am a community member of Vecinos Activos at Somos May Fair. As more low-income, as low-income households struggle to find an affordable home, it is critical to preserve existing affordable housing. While new construction is part of the puzzle, the complex and costly process of development prevent these efforts from keeping up with demand. Preserving existing affordable housing is not only an important supplement to new developments, but it is also an anti-displacement strategy. So my two questions are, what is your plan to preserve and subsidize affordable housing in San Jose? And what is your position on the Community Opportunity to Purchase Act known as ACOPA?
And we'll start with Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you for that question, Rebecca. Preserving affordable housing is the first step to meeting our city's housing supply needs. Our country builds approximately 100,000 affordable apartments each year, but for every new affordable apartment created, two are lost due to abandonment or conversion to market rate. Preserving affordable housing will require a holistic approach with a variety of interventions. I support using Measure E funds to preserve housing by directly financing the acquisition, rehabilitation, and stabilization of properties with the goal of maintaining long-term affordability. I also support the development and implementation of community-based programs that take housing off the speculative market and allow for a tenant group or nonprofit ownership, and allow for a nonprofit ownership, also known as ACOPA. This will allow our community to take ownership of affordable housing stability and preservation in their own neighborhoods. So for record, I do support ACOPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
My approach to the preservation of affordable housing is aligned with the counties recently undertaken to use the resources that we do have to purchase and retain the units and ensure that they're available for our community. With regard to ACOPA, I am supportive in theory, however, efforts to remove or to lessen the rights of private property owners over what they have, over what is theirs, is concerning. And so if we do weaken that, I think it goes against the American values of private property that we all have grown up with, and we understand that what is yours is yours and you can pass on to your generate, to future generations. I understand the response behind ACOPA. I am concerned that the implications or the negative effects that it may have on certain private property. And so those are things that I would, that I would be concerned about.
Thank you. Ms. Campos?
Thank you. I think we could not, still using other tactics and policies for affordable housing. I think that the things that we can do, which is a policy that currently is on the books, that isn't used as often as it should, is to have nonprofits that build affordable housing to take advantage of the San Jose's policy to build in commercial districts by building 100% of units that are affordable and exploring policies that can give the renters the opportunity to own the unit over time. I've talked about this. I think it's important for us to create a generational wealth within the Latino community and communities of color. I know that when my parents came here, my dad was, you know, he came and didn't have a job and worked in a car wash. And the fact that he was able to buy a home has allowed us to be able to own a home here. It is important that we need ownership.
Thank you. And Ms. Nguyen?
First of all, my top priority, as I mentioned earlier, is affordable housing. So preserving affordable housing is a must. All for it. Now, regarding the other question that you have, ACOPA and Purchase Action, I am a businessperson, so I believe in the same market economy process for everybody. We have to go through the same process. No favorism. I don't take sides. And ACOPA may look good on the paper, but I'm afraid it's not practical, you know, in reality. So we have to revisit it and see how we can create something, you know, institute a new law that is fair to all parties, not just one party and not the other one. So those two questions is where I stand. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Our next question, "Housing policy has been rooted in systemic racism at every level of government. For example, discriminatory lending practices and exclusionary zoning. We see the harmful effects of past and current policies disproportionately impacting people of color, segregation, limited housing choices, and a lack of opportunity. In order to dismantle segregation, close the racial wealth gap, and address the disproportionate housing instability in BIPOC communities, what housing policies, what housing policy changes would you prioritize?" And let's start with Mr. Quintero.
I think that the redlining that did take place has had the, I know it has. We've all, if you haven't had the opportunity, check out Color of Law, and it really digs down deep into that systemic racism that has led us to the situation we're in here in this area. It's a very, very valuable tool to look at. With regard to our situation here in San Jose, I think that the current, the current limits that we have with regards to our affordable, to our rent-controlled units has limited the ability for people to have access to spaces where they can live. I remember that because a couple was in a rent-controlled unit, the gentleman had a lot of severe illnesses. They were about to get kicked out. I was able to call in the city, and we were able to get them the support that they needed so they could stay. I think that we need to expand the support that people get and the actual control that's out there.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Ms. Campos? I think the first statement that you said, "Housing policy has been rooted in the systemic racism at every level of government," that is very true. But I also read that 80% of SEQA lawsuits target affordable housing projects, and we saw that throughout California. And we know we've seen it here in San Jose. And whether or not that is accurate, or it does, but it does expose a contradiction that must be addressed. Building affordable housing is much more aligned with the purpose of SEQA than those lawsuits. I will work with my colleagues on the city council and the city attorney office to focus on how we will fight back to make sure that we're able to remove that so that it doesn't discriminate in communities within San Jose so that we can build affordable housing. This will be a priority, and SEQA should be used as a tool, not as something that divides our communities.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
You know, talking about racism, it's very basic to me as, you know, in our society, we always have that kind of issues. And how are we going to deal with it other than we just educate ourselves, embrace other cultures, embrace other languages? Why don't just stand other people? To me, everybody, even the homeless people, I'm saying, have anyone go down and talk with them and meet with them. They are beautiful people. Regardless of the colors of their skin, we just have to be more compassionate. We have to, you know, loving kindness. We lost, we went up to the moon, now to the ocean, we lost the basis of humanity. That's where it should start. From the family, out of the society, not the other ways around. Not, everything is the society problem. No, what is a society is the family, is the people.
Thank you. And Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you. I will make a commitment today to advocate for our government to center racial equity across agencies and systems. This will include public safety, employment, and access to housing. Communities of color have been impacted by the discriminatory policies of the past. Redlining and exclusionary zoning have resulted in fewer opportunities for communities of color. That's a fact. I will advocate for our city to implement inclusive housing policies to mitigate the displacement of residents and create opportunities for families to thrive in our city. Developing a program to intentionally target city affordable housing funds for investments in communities of color to ensure housing sustainability. Amending and increasing protections such as the ARO will ensure that renters are not displaced, and the production of new affordable housing throughout our city will enable people from all income levels to have a place called home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thousands of city residents sleep outdoors each night, setting up tents and erecting temporary shelters of their own. Many house neighbors complain about encampments, but homeless residents typically don't have anywhere to go. What is your plan to end homelessness? And let's start with Ms. Campos.
Thank you for this question. Actually, I started on this question, on this journey back in 2015 when I passed AB 2176, which is a tiny homes, which is a bridge housing unit bill, and it creates wraparound services. Today, we have created with that language and that policy, six houses. six house, six hundred bridge housing units in the city of San Jose for the unhoused population. I will take those best practices, move quickly on that. Um, I will work to establish, as I said before, a unit of affordable housing in the, in the housing department. We need to shake things up. And it is important that we start reevaluating what departments are offering so that we can move quickly to build affordable housing. And currently, right now, when you have market rate and affordable housing and, you know, tiny homes, uh, to housing unhoused altogether in one unit, it's not working. One department for affordable housing.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
Thank you. You see, as a homeless, countryless person in the past, I understand how it feels to be a homeless person. What happening right now is that we only have BND solution. That's why we cannot solve ten thousand, only ten thousand homeless people. Back then, we have one million Vietnamese political refugees and we were able to house them. And they are taxpayers right now. What's wrong with our city and our county? I don't understand. It's only ten thousand people versus one million. We don't have long-term plan. I'm going to help with long-term plan. We don't have short-term plan that is workable. We use public, you know, facilities uneffectively. There are vacant facilities and there are people that don't have a place to leave. That is unacceptable.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz?
Uh, thank you for the question. I also come to this position with personal experience. Uh, I myself have been homeless. I know what it's like to be forced to sleep on a park bench here in District Five, as well as to be vulnerable to crime and, and violence and elements. Uh, many of us have lived paycheck to paycheck and several situations have been a hospital bill away from being put out on the street ourselves. Our goal should be to get our neighbors in the homeless community permanent housing, as well as to provide those in need mental health services and substance abuse counseling they deserve. We need to have an important conversation about creating and supporting permanent supportive housing options for the homeless residents. Without creating permanent solutions, we are not going to solve this very serious issue. In the interim, we can have short-term transitional housing opportunities. I mean, they're crucial, such as say parking programs, temporary housing opportunities. You know, they're, they're going to be immediate solutions. Uh, but it's not going to be a one-pronged answer. It's going to take a big commitment from everyone.
Thank you. And Mr. Quintero?
I think we need to go ahead and call this what it is and declare a state of emergency that allows us to move forward with rapid, uh, development of housing. Uh, we had situations just yesterday, I was talking to a gentleman who informed me that it took him two years to get an ADU. Obviously, you went through all the process and everything, two years to just get through the permitting. Uh, granted pandemic and stuff of that sort, but that number is not that far off from what it used to require anyways. And so there we have a crisis that's being fabricated by the decisions that are being made by the city council. A declaration of state emergency that allows us to move forward with the development of more housing units will, uh, immediately serve to lessen the demand on housing and allow for more supply that's going to help us address the situation. Uh, I believe that we need to continue to provide supportive housing that is needed for those folks who will not be able to thrive and to be able to succeed on their own. I also believe, and I want to apologetic about the fact that we need to maintain a safe and healthy community and that piles of garbage all over the place, uh, in many encampments are not acceptable. And I know that may not be popular to this crowd, but I'm not here to please you. I'm here to serve the people of East San Jose.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. We know it's easier to keep people housed now than to rehouse them if they fall into homelessness. The pandemic has shined a light on housing insecurity and the sheer number of San Jose residents who are at risk of losing their homes, especially those from BIPOC, BIPOC communities. What can the city do to prevent displacement? And as a council member, what protections would you propose or support to ensure that vulnerable tenants stay housed in San Jose? And let's start with Ms. Campos.
Thank you. We know that the study and the data shows that even though we're coming to the end of the pandemic, we're really not coming out of the pandemic. We know that we'll be in this situation for the next two years, which means that our vulnerable population will be facing challenges. And I think it is important that we figure out what the dollar amount that still exists from the feds that came to the San Jose, and I know it's in the ballpark of maybe eighty-nine million dollars. Well, let's figure out how we use some of that money to make sure that we create a streamline, a, a, a process for individuals to apply for that money. But implying for that money, it should not as difficult as it is for individuals to be able to get access to the money. Um, our population that we're talking about right now, they have one or two jobs. They don't have time to spend all their energy going through a paper process. So it needs to be streamlined so that they can have access, so they can keep their families in a house.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
For the question, you see, our city, uh, have faced with this problem for so many times, so many years. The basis to take care of housing problem is not to build thousands of housing, thousands of houses when people don't have the income to pay for it. So for me, the first thing is job creation. Once you take care of their, uh, income, then they will be able to pay for the rents. Otherwise, we just have houses and houses and still cannot house the needing people. Job creation is number one. And you look at District Five, we have store after store building after building vacant. My first year in office, I want to fill it up with a lot of people. Imagine how many people will be working, the property owners, the, uh, business owners, the employees. That's how you solve the main issue is housing.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you for this question. Uh, as the youngest candidate in this race and as a renter, a major piece of my campaign is to prioritize anti-displacement and renter protection policies to prevent the upheaval of our families. Uh, Silicon Valley is experiencing a housing affordability crisis that has led to unprecedented levels of homelessness. The displacement of families who have lived here for generations and the cleansing of our diverse cultural neighborhoods. I support amending the apart, apartment rent ordinance to include duplexes. I support allowing rent increases to be below five percent. I support providing families legal services in eviction proceedings through a right to counsel ordinance. And I will vote to adopt a local policy to expand statewide tenant protections to include all rental units. We need leadership that isn't going to be afraid to do what's right for our working families of East San Jose. And I'm ready to be that leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
About that, I think that we have, we have statewide, uh, laws that provide for rent control, for example, that makes sense, uh, at a statewide level. Uh, we need to go ahead and ensure that we can expand those and not limit the rent control that already exists only to a certain number of units that were built at a certain, prior to a certain, to a certain year. Um, that would be, uh, a significant step, uh, forward to allow, uh, some of the most vulnerable uh, in our community to be able to maintain, uh, the places that they currently live. I believe that we need to beef up and expand the support that we do provide. We have too many bad actors and too many unscrupulous individuals attempting to take advantage of, uh, uh, perceived, uh, the rights under the current law to go ahead and push people out and simply, you know, slap a coat of paint and bring new people in at a higher rate. Those are unacceptable actions and the city needs to, uh, double down its efforts to ensure that people are knowledgeable while protections are out there and that they're fully avail themselves of those protections.
Thank you. Reed Hillview Airport will not be an airport forever. In recent community discussions, ideas for future uses for the site range from parks to schools to jobs to affordable housing. How do you see your role as a city council member in shaping the priority vision for Reed Hillview and in making that vision a reality? Let's start with Ms. Nguyen.
Thank you for the question. Um, short term and long term. Short term, I like to turn it into a place to hold all of the unhoused people. Give them a tent, give them a mattress, a pillow, and a blanket. Help them to get the fighting spirit back. I think they had the survival skills very well, but they lost the fighting spirit and we can have them. We have proven records that we could do it for one million Vietnamese political refugees in the United States. Both speak the language and they are taxpayers now. We can do that with our own community members, our own family members, our own district members. They are no strangers. Just give them a helping hand. Turn it for short term. Long term will be affordable housing is my seeing. And, you know, providing guidelines, support, food, job placement for the needed people right now. Yeah.
Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you. Uh, my first priority for Reed Hillview is to ensure that we are implementing an effective strategy that eliminates the sources of lead exposure that are severely hurting our children. The lead levels would determine how the land actually gets used. As the country and as the county and city move forward with how we utilize this land, it's important that the, the needs of the surrounding community are front and center. I will advocate for a formation of a joint county-city task force to design how we utilize this enormous plot of land moving forward. The decisions that will dictate the future of Reed Hillview Airport must be community-led with the support of local elected officials second. Ideally, the land must be used in a way that benefits its surrounding community. Whether it's open space, community resources, affordable housing, or even workforce housing, it must be developed in the best interests of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
I think that this example is what aligns with what I've been talking about for a while, that, uh, we can use the assets that the city, uh, school districts, as president of the Alum Rock School Board, are moving with the teacher workforce housing, uh, uh, commission that is moving forward and exploring what we can do. Here we have an asset that's owned and, uh, lock stock and everything for, by the county. We would be able to leverage to the maximum, uh, you know, to whatever the county wants to do with it, uh, to ensure that the community that has been impacted by the uses of that site for generations can fully take advantage of, of the site. And so that would, uh, allow the county, uh, along with the city to go ahead and plan out an area that allows, uh, allows us to mitigate some of the, the gentrification that's been taking place in our community and ensure that, uh, our community can, can have a place where they can stay. One of the biggest fears that has been expressed out there by, uh, individuals who, who were concerned about the closure of the airport was they're going to close it and they're going to bring in million-dollar homes and we're not going to have access. And the county is in a position and the city is in a position to ensure that that does not happen.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Campos?
Uh, first of all, we'll need to make sure that, uh, all the lead is removed from the land. And once that's done, then we can roll up our sleeves and start the process. The process that I would use is the process that my community is very familiar with. The process that we use to develop story and keying to make it a economic, uh, machine where people can thrive and jobs were created. I will make sure that we include all the, the stakeholders, whether it's the advocates for affordable housing, the school district, uh, community leaders, residents, um, entertainment industry, so that we can create the jobs right there in our own backyard. I will also make sure that East Ridge Little League is part of the process too. Because if we're going to house, uh, our community, we need to make sure that we house, uh, the infrastructure that uh, is available for our youth. And I think that, uh, the, at the end of the day, um, I will be excited to plan, uh, the hundred and eighty acres to become a thriving community that interfaces with the existing community.
Thank you. All right. Our last few questions are rapid fire. Each candidate has been asked to keep their answers as short as possible, no more than five words, and single-word answers are what we're hoping for. Um, so this is the first question. Would you support a multifamily housing development that is in compliance with city policies and standards, even if neighbors come out in full force to oppose it? And let's start with Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, but we'll stress community engagement.
Mr. Quintero?
On base zoning, not all city policies are equal. I would have to look at, at the, at the issue case by case.
Thank you. Ms. Campos?
Yes.
And Ms. Nguyen?
No, uh, size bit so, so case by case basis is my stance.
Thank you. Um, and this is from the Vietnamese-American Roundtable. Mobile home parks are naturally occurring affordable housing and many families of color live in mobile home parks. The city council voted to create a mobile home designation in the general plan and to rezone all mobile home parks to preserve them from conversion. But the city has yet to do so. Do you believe that this is still the best course of action? Mr. Quintero?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Campos?
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen?
It's the most.
And Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Thanks. San Jose was exploring opportunity housing, which was preempted by California Senate Bill nine, SB nine. The new state law requires cities to allow two to four homes on properties previously restricted to a single house. Contrary to some other cities that are making it harder for property owners to use SB nine, San Jose City Council has directed staff to develop prop, policies to prioritize feasibility, accessibility, and affordability. Do you support or oppose local rules that make it easier for people to take advantage of SB nine? Ms. Campos?
Yes, but I also want to make sure that it makes sense and doesn't create other environmental impacts like traffic congestion noise and air quality.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
Again, yes, in general, but case by case basis.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, but I'll be looking at how it affects their surrounding community.
And Mr. Quintero?
I, we, it's a crisis. We need to support SB nine. However, we need to mitigate those or be prepared for the unintended consequences that may result. As a result of it.
In general, should San Jose, a major city, support state actions that hold all cities, including Silicon Valley's smaller, more exclusive communities accountable to allow and build more homes? Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Quintero?
Yes, can allow our neighbors to get away without doing their share to solve this crisis.
And Ms. Campos?
Yes.
A commercial linkage fee collects fees from commercial development to help fund affordable housing. Would you support increasing San Jose's commercial linkage fee if an outside study shows that higher fees are financially feasible? Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, our fee is a lot lower than some of the surrounding Bay Area cities.
Mr. Quintero?
Yes, I would support that.
Ms. Campos?
Yes.
And Ms. Nguyen?
Of course.
Do you support the Santa Clara County Community Plan to End Homelessness? Mr. Quintero?
Yes.
Ms. Campos?
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
And last question. Some people have argued that if some sort of shelter is available, then unhoused people should be forced to take it, which raises serious practical, ethical, and legal questions. Would you support forcing people to move into shelters? Ms. Campos?
I think the question we should be asking ourselves is do we want to end homelessness? And shelters should, if, if we move forward, they all should have mental health services and wraparound services for the unhoused population.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
No, in general, but in order to end homelessness, we need to have incentive programs and talk to the people so that they understand the issue and they will willingly going to the shelters. I would do that, not forcing people. I don't believe in force.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Ortiz?
Uh, no, my colleague H G hit it right on the head. We need to provide incentives for them to come, not force.
And Mr. Quintero?
I think there are individuals that are on, on a healthy situation and do need the support of our community, rather than allowing them to deteriorate out in public and on the streets and the street medians and stuff of that sort. So uh, at certain extent, at a, at certain points, individuals need to be supported by their community.
Thank you. Now to make their final pitch, each candidate will share a Now to make their final pitch, each candidate will share a one-minute closing statement. And we'll start with Ms. Campos.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts and my vision about affordable housing and how we can change the dynamics at City Hall. I am running because it's important that we create a community where individuals can walk out their front door and know that they're safe and visit their neighboring park or their neighbor. To know that our unhoused population are housed in a very respectable way. And like I said, AB twenty-one seventy-six allows that. And so we need to wrap ourselves around that and make sure that we're building more homes for our unhoused population. But having said that, it is so important that we move forward in a, in a quick manner to get affordable housing units in the pipeline. I also want that we create our parks that will our community can enjoy and our children can enjoy. That is important for me. And create an economic engine here in East San Jose where it supports our small businesses. Thank you for this time. And once again, I'm hoping that you'll consider supporting me.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
Thank you again for this opportunity. Please visit my webpage, hgforSanJose.com. You will view my platform and if you agree with me, then please, by all means, give me a helping hand. Together, we can build the best San Jose. And remember, strong family, healthy family will lead to strong and healthy District Five, not the other way around. And if we have that, then definitely we will be able to solve a lot of social issues that we are facing right now in District Five and in the city of San Jose. So together, help me to make a difference in District Five and remember, strong family, healthy family lead to strong and healthy District Five. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you and thank you all for this opportunity. The residents of District Five, they deserve a leader who has been consistent in their advocacy. I've been an advocate for this district before the cameras and the newspapers were paying attention. Our residents deserve someone who's going to fight on their behalf, someone who cares about this city and has a track record of advocating for its residents. I represent the working families and small businesses of District Five and them alone. You have my word that I will be accessible and that I will make all my decisions in partnership with the residents of my district. When neighborhood leaders, community-based organizations, and local nonprofits reach out to me, I will always prioritize answering that call. Because I truly believe that together, we can build a better East San Jose that works for all of us. Thank you and I'll see you on the campaign trail.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz, or sorry, Mr. Quintero?
Thank you for this opportunity to be here and talk about this very important issue. I in terms of what we've done, what our track record is, I've put forward my credentials sort of on the Alum Rock School Board since twenty-twelve, right there in a very narrowly focused area, which was, it's just education of our children. I've already been moving forward with the establishment of a workforce housing committee that is already moving forward and forging ahead to begin the process of recommending and eventually, I'm hoping my colleagues agree, to move forward with the building of units for our teachers that would go ahead and remove them from the market and allow that, that, those units to go to other individuals so that there is not competition there. I'm looking forward to the work that I'm going to be doing on the city council when I do get elected there to ensure that we continue to use our assets to address this crisis that we're facing here in San Jose with regard to housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes the candidate portion of this forum. Thank you to each of the candidates for your thoughtful responses to some difficult questions. Recordings of this forum will be posted online to the SV at Home Action Fund's YouTube page. And before we sign off, Regina Slesin-Williams, Executive Director at SV Home and the SV at Home Action Fund has some important words.
Thank you so much, everyone, especially to our moderator, Jenna Kada. I really appreciate you for being in the space and moderating this conversation for us tonight. We are putting up a very simple three-question poll. And we'd like to ask for you to fill it out. We hope this forum has helped you learn about housing issues and the candidates and helped you be more informed as a voter. And thank you again to not only our moderator, but our candidates and our interpreters. It really takes a collective effort to pull off one of these events. So I want to thank you all for being here and helping this run very smoothly. Thank you to all of our co-hosts, all of you who are working in and for the community, helping us to reach more voters on such critical issues such as housing and how do we, how do we solve the homeless crisis? So this was the fourth in our series of five forums this spring. We invite you to come to our last forum, which is next Wednesday, when we'll hear from candidates for Santa Clara County Supervisor District One. I appreciate you all sharing space with us tonight, doing so very respectfully. And so thank you and have a wonderful evening.